That don't know me or don't recognize me, not in uniform. But I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council about the New Mexico Department of Veteran Service Office that opened up here in town and to ask for your help in getting the word out that we now have a veteran service office in our community where veterans can come and get help with their VA claims, VA loan requests, state benefits, anything dealing with veteran services, we now have an office here in town. Representative Harry Garcia was really instrumental in getting the funding for it. Before they only had these offices in major cities, Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Farmington, Las Cruces, now we have one in our community, which I think is a, you know, a big benefit to veterans. You know, I was wearing the uniform for 40 years and I'm finding out stuff I didn't know. Laws change all the time and there's services that our veterans, you know, could be applying for. We are, I am at the old county building there across from the old library. Now, it is a state office, so there is no, we're teleworking still right now. But beginning of June, they're looking at reopening so we can do in-person, you know, appointments, but I am still working online, can help veterans that way. You know, the one thing I tell them up at the state, a lot of our veterans are older, they don't know how to scan documents, attach emails, and so I still meet with them out in the parking lot here and try and help them out. But again, if you could help me, if there's any veterans in your districts that, you know, are looking for veteran services, point them my way.
Yeah, Facebook?
I do have my own personal day thing about social media, you know?
Yeah, with Chris and Chris posts some of his stuff for us, started to get the word out. Do you have a website set up yet or anything like that?
The New Mexico Department of Veteran Services has their main website that links to us.
Okay.
And I do have a state email. And again, we can do a lot of that through there. So again, that's available, but if, again, I could get your help trying to get the word and if there's any other-
Social media, social media works out. So share something with Chris, I'll share it on mine. That's how you get the word out pretty quick.
I've been using that community page there.
The community page, yeah, Cebola, the lady that runs Gabby's, she has a big following.
Right.
You get with her, we have like 5,000 followers on us, thanks to the mayor.
Yeah, and there's a lot of, but there's a lot of people, like I was getting called from Pi Town because this is like the Cebola County. And just to let you know, it's not the VA. Because when I first, they asked me about this position, I have my issues with the VA also. This is the go-between, between the veteran and the VA in helping them settle. So that's the part I like about it.
After I talked to you the other day, I looked into it and I didn't believe that there's a lot of services out there for the veterans and they need someone like you to guide them through it because there's, I mean, computers are scary to some people and so thank you for what you're doing, that's cool.
You know, a lot of business opportunities which can benefit the city, you know, loans that they can get, if you can get them in there, get a VA loan, help them start a business and get the community going again.
Yes, sir. That's great, George. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Everybody who knows, really likes him, knows that he's smart, shares. Well, thank you. I'm here because I have a couple of questions and comments. The first question is, is our city's charter flexible? And by that I mean, can we be out of compliance for one meeting and then be in compliance for another meeting? Because about a month ago, Mr. Rodarte said we were in compliance and then at the last meeting, the mayor said we were not in compliance. So I don't know that much about government, that's why I always come, I'm trying to learn. So I hope that's something you will address. The second one, what are the qualifications for a city manager? I've been looking in the paper and I have found lists of qualifications from other communities. And at the last meeting, the mayor said he had forgotten his at home. And I was hoping, all of you since you're on the council, you know what the qualifications are. So I would appreciate some answers, responses to that. And then I'm hoping that our new city manager, Vanessa, will introduce herself. Because I know she taught PE at the high school and she loves horses and for one Halloween, I'll tell you, he was looking good in a blackout. I'll never forget that. Yes. So I'd like to have her introduce herself and tell us something about her history, like where was she educated, what were her areas of concentration, her government experience, military experience. And I'm especially interested in what your hopes and goals are for the city and the citizens of Grants. So that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, Vanessa, you can probably address that at some other time. I think about 30 minutes maybe, huh? Maybe longer.
Hell yes.
It's coming.
Who said they? Chamber of Commerce? I speak for the mayor right now, I bet you we are.
It's in the plans.
We're gonna figure it out.
Eileen-
You're the rodeo queen, weren't you? Yeah, we missed it last year, so. We're looking into it, I think it's in the plans, so. Yeah, it's in the plans, so, thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Public comment on discussion of the charter, if we're in compliance. And the mayor says we're not, I think we are. I'm not sure what the issues are.
The last meeting he's here, the closed one, or the last, the special one?
Yeah, well, no, not the special one.
It's been before that.
Before that one, yeah. He thinks we're out of compliance, but. I don't know the issues on that and what the answer is, but I think we need to come to terms with not just us, but also the mayor as to what the issue is. The last time I heard, it was based on the terms for each of us and, you know, it's-
Oh, no, but we voted against not have that election. That would have been on the compliance, because if we would have voted yes, because we're not-
Before that, I think last year or year before, we voted to not have term limits, right?
Well, I don't think there was ever any term limit. Am I correct on the charter?
Well, there was a clause in the charter that expressed clearly, you know, that there was term limits. And then that was changed sometime in the last couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years.
Before I came on board, it was changed.
Okay.
And that was to comply with state statute.
Yeah, and I think the issue is that we're not part of, you know, we're municipality, so we don't have to adhere to the state statutes in that regard, something like that. But yeah, it's something we need to iron out and that may take some more time, obviously, but it's definitely something we need to look at, whether we need to be in compliance or not, so. I think we need to hang on to that for a little while. Let's see, second on the item would be the approval of the regular city minutes. Any issues, guys?
For April?
Yeah, for April.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular city council minutes for 42621.
I second it.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
And Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Okay. And we need a special, we need to approve the minutes for the special city council minutes for 55, 2021.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council minutes for 55.
That was for that special meeting, huh?
Special meeting, yeah. You went here. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
And I shall prove it. Okay, item number four, we have an application for appointment, Animal Care Board, Larry I don't see him in the audience, but. Okay, but he does want to be on the board? Okay, sure. Any motion on that to approve Larry?
I make a motion to approve Mr. McCarthen.
I'll second it.
Okay, Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
Please in. Number five, municipal judge presentation.
Hello?
There's another one right here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vanessa, there's one, there's the next one.
Good evening, councilman and manager. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present before you this evening. The reason that I'm here is to ask for you to approve a raise for our municipal judge's The information gathered that was handed to you for review is a current list of our department head salaries, just for you to be able to take a look at that. And then also, the second page would be various municipal courts across the state of New Mexico and kind of what it looks like they're doing, what their salaries are. And looking at the municipal courts across our state, it's really difficult to kind of know exactly what municipal courts are because they kind of ran on a spectrum from very small courts, holding court once a month, medium-sized courts, to large courts like Las Cruces, Roswell, Santa Fe. So what the court attempted to do was gather information regarding salaries across New Mexico for municipal courts that are comparable in size and also caseload.
Which one, which one of these places are about the same size of population of what Grants is?
I would say, now, I'm not 100% accurate on all of this, but I would say Espanola is very similar, they're just a little over 10,000, or just below 10,000 if I remember correctly.
How many court cases do they generally have?
Very similar, they're around 1,600 a year.
And they're similar to us?
Los Lunas is similar.
Again, they have the same caseload?
They actually have a larger caseload than what we handle.
So we're about the same as Espanola? Caseload, 15,000, really?
Yeah. It's different because municipalities also, you know, there's no guarantee that the municipal caseload is filtering through the municipal court. So, you know, every city varies on the caseload that they handle. If the officers are pushing them through the municipal court, they could have a very high volume of cases. If law enforcement officers are not utilizing the municipal court to its fullest potential and filing in magistrate court, then it's going to lessen the caseload for municipalities. So I think it just depends on what's happening in each individual location.
So you're at, down at the bottom, that's you?
That is correct.
And how many hours a week are you doing there?
Forty, I'm there Monday through Friday, that is a full-time position.
Espanola's got Lowe's, Home Depot, 15, McDonald's, I mean, give a few.
Applebee's?
Yeah, very different, you're right, very different in economic structure.
You gotta realize that grocery stores' stacks against us is way out of the board, you know?
And I think the municipality actually acknowledges that in fairness, now that the municipal judge in that municipality is no longer seated, they are looking to change their charter and lessen the salary, for whatever reason, he was able to get it tapped into the state judge's salary, so he was making a very nice amount of salary, but they are looking at changing that and lessening it.
What, 16, what do you, 30 a year?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five a year?
Right, before taxes and everything.
You don't happen to know the size of Los Alamos, do you?
I don't.
I thought they were pretty small.
They are. They are very well established, so their municipal courthouse is like its own probation department, its own community service department, its own DWI program, like, they have resources funneling through their court. And a lot of those are paid through court costs, you know, that they're able to collect in that municipality.
What is your, you have a master's degree, don't you?
I do.
What makes you want to stay here being the judge when you can make more money somewhere else?
Because I love serving our community and helping opportunities for change with people. And I believe I can fulfill that in this role. I do recognize that the request for a raise would not go into effect until March, because our charter reads that it's only during an election year.
Right.
So, you know, that is understood. However, the court just believed, or I believed, that it was the time to act on this is now because eventually come March, it will affect next year's fiscal budget, so I think it's important to be able to calculate that in next year.
You're off for election next March, you gonna run again?
I am. I can't answer that with certainty right now.
But you want to put it in?
I do, whether it's me or anybody else, I believe if we want to attract qualified people to that position, that we need to also compensate as well.
How many years you been doing it?
A little over 11.
11 years. When's the last time that the judge got a raise?
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago?
Yes.
God bless.
You didn't get one with the, was it a couple of years ago when the city got across the board?
No, sir, the last raise that was offered to the municipal judge salary was 2014.
Because it has to be an election year.
It has to be an election year.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah, for the first four years, it was 25,000, that's what I served as, and then there, we advocated again and they approved another 10,000, so then it went to the 35,000. So it's not quite been eight years, we're just shy of eight years.
Well, I think you're due for another raise.
I think the position is, yes.
We don't have to act on this now, this is just information, right?
Yeah, that's something we need to take a look at.
Check the budget.
See what we can do for you.
Is there any other additional information that you, that I can help gather that would be beneficial in your decision-making?
Yes, how much do you break in a month? I mean, you know, why is this money?
Right, so.
I need that.
Funds and stuff.
Right. So I would say that that varies from month to month, I don't have that information with me, however, I do want to encourage that the court is not a revenue generating basis for the municipality, you will always lose money through the municipality greater than what you can bring in.
I understand that 2019 wasn't, you know, it was a pandemic, you know?
Right.
But like, no, I'm sorry, 2020, 2019, we'll get a fair answer from 2019, because we weren't close. And like you say, it varies, you know, you have three clients one day and four the other, you know, so maybe you don't analyze those guys, maybe, you know, I know how it works, so.
How many employees do you have, Henry?
How many employees? I have two full-time court staff and then there's an alternate judge who serves in my
How much she get paid?
She gets paid as the judge when she serves.
Same amount as you, I mean.
Sixteen dollars an hour. But she doesn't gather benefits, she doesn't accrue sick leave or vacation leave, she simply just gets paid on the days that I'm unavailable.
Let me ask you a question, Lise. Is there a, I don't know if this pertains to it or not, is there a, does the state have any recommendations as to what salaries a municipal judge would get?
They do not, because the way that the court system is tiered through the state, like, we are not connected through the administrative office of the courts and the salaries that, like, state judges are afforded. Our magistrate judges, again, kind of comparable to what Espanola was making, their municipal judge was locked in at $90,000, simply because that was the lowest paid magistrate salary in their community. So our state judges are making significantly greater and there's changes repeatedly because it's a certain percentage based on the chief justice of the Supreme Court salary. So every time the chief justice of the Supreme Court gets a raise, it trickles down through the state. And unfortunately, we're just not tied into that, but that's a consideration. Something to think about.
Now, is that something that the city would have to opt into, or what?
Not opt into, I just believe it would be an ordinance that would be adopted, essentially saying that our municipal judge position makes a certain percentage of the state magistrate judge position, and then every time that changed, I mean, I think it'd be challenging again, because we have the language that reads municipal judge's salary can only increase during the election year, and then if there's a cycle of raises that happens to the state judges, you know, how does that affect the municipal judge and how do you implement that? But it would be done by ordinance.
What municipality does that? I'm sure somebody does that.
Espanola, they had it that way. But yes, they are the municipality also reconsidering the way that that's structured to change it. That municipal judge just did a really good job on the council.
So is that something that usually is determined by the councils themselves, right?
Right, each municipality has it established under ordinance, the municipal judge role and what that looks like, part-time, full-time, elected, a lot of them are not even designated as full-time or part-time employees or elected officials, they're simply declared as elected officials and they, nobody, you know, they make their docket and their schedules however that fits. Some have it in ordinance, we have it in ordinance, that the municipal judge must put in at least 30, 30 or 35 hours a week, I have to refresh my memory, but we have it in ordinance, the hours of the judge, and then the judge can structure that, how it works.
Can you get that information for us, as to how Espanola does theirs?
I can.
And that way you could present it to us and we can look at it?
Like, as far as connecting the municipal judge's salary to the state judges? I can ask them how their ordinance currently reads, I believe that's what it would be, is just what their ordinance is, but I can get that information.
Each municipality has a different ordinance, right? They have to, because right here you got Aztec full-time, it's 50% of the magistrate.
Right, Aztec had that as well, you're right.
They have that ordinance, that trickles down from the magistrate to municipal judge. So it's got to be different from all of them.
Any other questions?
No, just, thank you for what you do, I mean, I wouldn't want to be the judge. I know it's hard work, we'll take a look at it.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Lise.
So 2019 budget you'd like to look at and then the ordinance from?
Yes, 2019, 20, we're out of, I'm not sure, you know.
Yeah, everything came, so 2019, we can draft a report that indicates how much was-
Yeah, but that's the closest we can go, because we can go back to 2018, it's too far back.
Yeah.
Thank you, Judge, thank you.
When's the last time the council got a raise?
It was back in-
I haven't got a raise since I've been here, that's-
It was during the first term of Joe Murietta, is when we put in a rate for the council.
What year, 20?
That was, that's been, geez.
20 years, 10 years?
No, it's probably closer to 10 years.
It's about 2010.
Around there.
Oh, well.
All right, item six, CCEDF budget request for FY '22.
Who's gonna tackle that one?
That's the economic, is Eileen here?
Oh, here we go.
You're supposed to make a presentation, I think. Right, Vanessa? Isn't Eileen supposed to be here?
It's my first time using this, I want to make sure I do it right.
Okay.
If this, if this is the presentation for Eileen Chavez Yarborough?
Yes.
She called me today and asked if she could present at the next meeting?
Oh, okay.
Because there were some issues going on, and so I told her I would address that.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll table-
Table it, please.
Table number six, so, and you make a motion to table number six?
I'll make a motion, we table number six.
I second it.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
Okay, we'll table it till next time.
Is that gonna be okay for next time though, because she's, you're gonna be putting, yeah, you're right, you're, yeah, you're good. Budget goes in the first round right at the end of the month, right?
Hey.
We just made a payment about a month ago through the economic development. I was there at the meeting when they announced it.
Oh, okay. We're in good standing with them? Okay. Item seven, resolution 2021 1718, New Mexico DOT funding for Washington.
Mayor Council, the DOT's currently having a call for projects, every year they do a call for projects for what funding they have available. You guys recently passed a resolution in support of Roosevelt Bridge for MAP, for the MAP program. Anyway, the local transportation project fund, which is a 95% grant, 5% match, we're gonna go after some funds for the Washington Drainage Project, from what we understand with, working with the COG, talking to the COG is, there's something like about $3 million available, so we're applying, you guys are familiar with the Washington Drainage Project, right from the bridge, we done Jefferson, then we done the bridge, now we're gonna do from the bridge to Andaman, we had a, we've applied for CDBG- Now we're gonna do from the bridge to Andaman. We had a, we're, we've applied for, uh, C D B G funds from the bridge to the corner of futures. It's a little section, but seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth. Anyway, uh, we don't know if we've been approved. We won't know until late summer for C D B G. So these other funds have become available. And there's, uh, two million available. So two million would get us from the bridge. So that would take out the C D B G. It'd get us from the bridge to Andaman. It would complete, it would complete the project.
We wouldn't have to use that little section.
We wouldn't have to use C D B G, which would be nice, but, I mean, yeah, because C D B G is federal money, so there's a lot, a lot more strings attached. There's a lot more paperwork on my part, so I'd be happy. But money's money, so, you know, so if we just get one point five million, we still have the opportunity for C D B G. So say, say we don't get the whole two million, but we understand there's two million available for the city grant. So we're applying this resolution. Basically, you guys are giving us the authority to pursue those funds of which we'll apply for. The city's match, the way, uh, land, uh, projects are landing now, I'm, my guess would be that we wouldn't have to budget for the match until the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year.
Hundred grand.
Yes, a hundred grand match. Yeah. Now the, the next resolution, I might as well explain while I'm at it, is an, another resolution and it's for Sacoleras. So, uh, Sacoleras, the, we probably won't get these funds, but the reason I'm applying.
Too negative, say, we're gonna get them.
Well, the last time that happened, I, you're right, I did eat my words. But in this case, I, I think I'm gonna be right. But anyway, we're applying for funds just because we need to start thinking about Sacoleras.
Yes, sir.
And that's, and that road, it's not gonna just be a road project. It's gonna be an economic development project. Cause that's the next area of growth. That's where things are going. We want to do it right to where, uh, it's built for growth, built for the future. So anyway, that's, I just want to keep on doing that because that's the next big project after we finish these bridges.
Sacoleras is gonna be something like twenty mil, huh?
That's what I understand about. And that's today. So you wait five years.
If we wait a year, it'll be twenty-five million.
Yeah, exactly. The way these projects are going.
Our part would be ten percent of that.
Uh, it'd be, uh, five percent. If, if we're funded by the project fund, then the match is five percent. If it's MAP, which Roosevelt Bridge is, that's three million and that's gonna be a twenty-five percent match. So we're applying for these. We don't get awarded until later this year. We'll find out. Once we're awarded, of course, you guys will be made aware.
To go after the Sacoleras deal, I mean, it's a long shot, right? Twenty million.
Yeah.
But, but.
Well, but we only applied for five hundred thousand planning.
For the planning. That's what you're doing right now.
That's just planning. So design's gonna be like two, three million.
Yeah.
Design. So, and then construction's sixteen, seventeen million. It's gonna be done in phases.
Twenty twenty-three again? Twenty-two, twenty-three?
We'll, we'll keep on applying for, uh, Sacoleras. See, what's nice about Sacoleras is it connects two state highways.
Oh, yeah.
So that makes it eligible for, for some other funding. So we'll just keep on targeting Sacoleras. Just as a project manager, I want to, you know, make sure we.
I mean, that's gonna be our next biggest, probably biggest chunk of change. So how do we start saving for that? Just start saving, huh? Because it's coming and it's coming and our match is gonna be one point five million.
Yeah. And we'll do it in phases. Like, you know, we'll do it in phases. Don't have a heart attack. So anyway, asking for your approval of resolution seventeen eighteen and seventeen nineteen.
Well, on seventeen and eighteen, any questions? Any other questions on Washington?
So how does that do on Washington? So if we get that one, you'll work with the school systems? Because if we start doing that road, how does that impact the school?
Okay, it's already, ours is already under design. Wilson has a task order for designing that section. So it'll be designed, be finished design by year's end. So we could possibly go to construction next summer. Okay. But that's if everything lands right. If not, of course, as soon as possible, I would say the next. And the school is bid out now for design. And that's gonna be a year process. So if things land the way I'd like them to, the road will be done prior to the school, a year before. But that's not necessarily for sure.
Now, how's, how's that, how's that gonna fare as far as the road and the condition with all these trucks going in and out of the school? I mean, the load and so forth.
Thank God we're getting first and second because they're gonna be utilized. They'll be going that way up because, yeah, there's all the other streets. Those, those trucks are ruining them. Right. Those trucks are just ruining them. So, I mean, is it good for the road to be done before the school's done? Maybe not. Maybe we let the school be done and then we do the road. I mean, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, obviously we're just going for funding now. And, you know, once it gets closer, then we could plan specific times. And if, if they could be done at the same time, if they can't, I mean, you know, there's a lot of collaborative. And we, we've worked with the schools real well. Thank God we, we have a good relation with the schools. They've applied for some funds. We've applied and we've been able to double dip on the, the bridge, the ped bridge, the channel, and the next phase of the channel. We've been able to double dip.
They design the roads pretty good nowadays. So.
Yeah.
It's there before the school, so be it. I just don't want to see that road flooded no more.
Yeah, I think it's just one of those things where whatever happens first, you just go, you just do it. You know what I mean? I mean, it'd be nice. So, anyway, requesting your guys' approval.
Yep. What's the?
What's the pleasure here?
What's the pleasure of the, uh, council here?
What is it? Twenty twenty-one?
Seventeen eighteen.
I make a motion. We go with the resolution twenty twenty-one one seventeen, New Mexico funding participation authorized for Washington Bridge Avenue Drainage Project.
I'll second that one.
Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
And Counsel?
Yes.
And then resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen nineteen, New Mexico DOT funding participation authorized Sacoleras Boulevard Project. Make a motion. I'll now want to.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Counsel Adarte?
Yes.
Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
And Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
All right. There you go. That's approved.
Thank you. The next one's pretty simple. You guys are familiar with it. Looks the same. It's just that the last meeting, whenever someone made a motion, they just said buy, uh, Bobcat for a hundred thousand. And it had to be specific to a vendor. So the vendor is Clark Equipment Company, D B A Bobcat Company. That's how the action needs to be, that we purchase through the funding agreement of the state, which is, uh, yeah, just be specific on the vendor, on the motion.
What was the vendor?
Uh, it's right there. Clark Equipment Company, D B A Bobcat Company. And that's the, that's purchasing the Bobcat that I guess Eric had said recommended, what I understand.
And including all the attachments, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It's a lot of attachments.
It's a truckster with some attachments and so.
Ninety-nine, nine-nine-nine.
A good step forward to getting some equipment we can actually, um.
And, and it's being purchased through the Go Bond. Right. Nice. Not costing us anything.
Thank you to the state.
Sure. What's the pleasure? You should go with it.
I make a motion that we go with, uh, Skidster purchase with attachments from Clark Equipment Company, D B A Bobcat Company, capital outlay twenty dash E twenty-five oh seven.
I'll second it.
With the amount of?
Oh, shit. Don't shoot. Of?
Nine ninety-nine plus tax.
Nine-nine-nine.
Gee, wow. Mark, you got that right on the money, huh?
Saved us a dollar.
Ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Includes tax.
Good job.
Is there a second?
I do have it.
I second.
No, second. Counsel, Counsel Adarte?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes, sir.
And Counsel Padilla?
Yes.
Okay, it's approved.
Mayor Protem, can I note something real quick? I just want to give you on, just to show you how we're utilizing the Go Bond funds for water and wastewater improvements. For example, we've dug up First Street and we're going down Adams Street for the connection to the pond and pump station. Anyway, when they dug up that street, they found out that that water line is pretty much history, lots of breaks and all that. So instead of adding it to the First Street project, we utilize the Go Bond funds, work directly with the contractor. Cause if you were to have a contractor come mobilize and do all the work, believe me, you're gonna pay forty, fifty thousand. Anyway, we're having the work done for a little over nineteen thousand. And that's, that's just because, um, being smart, you know, the roads dug up, everything's, the trench is there. You might as well replace the water line while you're at it. Before you put the new road on and the new sidewalk.
That's only the water line?
Uh, they found out now that the sewer line is damaged to them. We're gonna replace it. Right, Mark?
What's the balance on the Go Fund?
We're at about, I think we've only spent about maybe two hundred thousand of the two point five million. And it's specific one million for wastewater, one point five million for.
Donald, maybe you can answer a question for me. Um, I was talking to the project manager down there on First Street, Pete Fernandez. And he was telling me that, uh, all the lights that, uh, go down First Street are not affected by the construction bid. That they're all gonna be taken out and, but there's not, no plans to have replaced.
Now, now the old lights are, yes, the old lights are going from Washington on, not, not where they've done already. Those lights are staying. But from Washington to Roosevelt, the light, the old lights are coming down. And in the current bid, the lighting, uh, they bid it as an alternate, the, the lighting, so it's not part of the project right now.
Yeah.
However, we're locating, because it's a six point two million dollar project. So as a project develops, we're locating items, the quantities of certain items that we could save. And right now we're at a balance, this, I don't really wanna say this out loud, but we're at a balance of about three hundred thousand that's available. And we need about two seventy, two eighty for lighting. So we're right in line to add the, that's why I'd like for the water improvements. We, we could have added the water improvements on Adams to the project. But we don't want to add anything to the project anymore because we're right at the window of where we could still add the lighting to the project. I would hate to do that road and not have lighting, just as you guys probably.
But we're doing hardcore, hard lighting. We're not doing solar.
Correct. Hard lighting, yeah. Now the, solar has been discussed, but nothing real.
Yeah. And what about the, the lines going there? What is it from, uh, First Street? That's gonna go to the old Knights of Columbus. Understand that there's gonna be kind of a change order there. Is that true?
Uh, change order as in?
Uh, I don't know. They, I don't know if there's something has to do with, uh.
The, the First Street Pond and, well, the First Street Pond and Pump Station, we, we started it. We bid it out, but the bids came in too high. So we're negotiating right now with the contractor. I don't know if that's what you're talking about. Cause we, we had to deny all the bids. If you notice, uh, uh, about a month ago, we bid it out. Two weeks later, we opened the bids and they, the bids were like, I think the lowest one was thirty percent higher than budget. So the engineers are going back, we're going back and forth, we're consulting and we're trying to drop the price. I think it was about three, four hundred thousand, Mark, something like that, to where we could get it in the range of where we like it. And then we're gonna rebid it. So First Street Pond and Pump Station, and it's important to get that done right now because it ties into the First Street project. All those new lines going to the Pond and Pump Station. But we haven't bid out First Street Pond and Pump Station. We're, we're, right now we're removing it while the asbestos is removed and we're gonna start demolishing here pretty soon. We have to go through a whole new bid process because they were real high.
All right. Thank you.
Maybe that's what you're talking about.
Well, I thought, uh, when I talked to Pete, he's talking, that drainage that's gonna be addressed there. He says that there was some, uh, some stuff that they, uh, were gonna have to address.
Is there something else?
Yeah. Well, there's also one, uh, curving gutter.
And that wasn't in the original design, right?
But those modifications are being done right now with, with the understanding that it's gonna be in the final change order of the project. Because there's so much concrete in the project that, that little added concrete on the, on the corner of Adams is, is not much to the contractor anyway. So they're just doing it. And then over time, they said with over and unders, it's not gonna cost us anything.
Mark, is that in front of the Garajalves?
It'll, it's not directly in front of the corner.
Yes. Will it help those folks right there?
Okay.
Is there a, remember you and I think, oh, I told you to talk to them too.
How much would it cost to landscape that pump station? Have you looked into that yet? Cause that's not in the bid.
No, it's not.
I think it'd leave a ugly dirt hole.
Yeah, probably about a hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, if you get that nice dark gravel and the canopy and everything that's in the picture, you're probably looking at that. You know, I, I, it'd be nice if we got, and I think we will, we have a staff for a while. It'd be nice if we could plan projects and then, and plan to where the city basically foots the design, foots the, the expense for design and foots the expense for, uh, any added items, uh, like trees and all that kind of stuff. Because construction, hard construction funding is, is pretty much out there. But you gotta be designed. And most, and a lot of communities that they don't have the money and, and I think we do have the money. But anyway, uh, I, if we would invest in design and planning, construction is pretty much automatic. Now, you're not gonna get all free construction, but you, believe me, you're gonna get like a seventy-five, twenty-five, which is why not? Yeah. You know, ninety-five, five. So anyway.
So what's your recommendation for, there's a different project like next door to the library? Getting that remodeled. I mean, would we go to like, there's an architect to get it somewhat designed so it's in there? Or so we can actually find funding to do that? But if we had the design already, what it looks like and what it's gonna cost? Do we be doing that?
You have the design?
No, no, no. Should we both be going out to be looking for that? Is there funding for stuff like that?
Laura, prior to Laura leaving, she was working with facility build, which facility build's concept is they'll design it for you. But then you gotta go to them for construction. Now whether they make up the, I'm sure they make up the designing construction costs. I don't know how they do it, but that's how. So there's different options. You could get free design and then hire the same people to build.
I really think Grants needs a community rec, not rec, but a hall, I guess, where you can have weddings, birthday parties, but have a big open space with a commercial kitchen. But we can keep people staying in Grants instead of having, going to Albuquerque to have their, their events. Yeah, that's just a project that maybe we need to look into.
There's, there's like a rough sketch that they done for. It wasn't real specific, but you could see where they're proposed.
Cause we're not making any money with it being empty. So we'll figure it out.
Thank you. Thanks, Don.
Hey, that's it. Um, any comments?
No.
Eric, anything?
With our marketing, Chris, whenever there's an event as far as a rodeo, you gotta be advertising on our website. If there's an event of golf course tournaments, we need to be advertising. I don't see any of that advertising on our Facebook, social media. And that's our biggest, biggest tool to try to get people to come in here. We had a rodeo this weekend. I didn't see anything. No, 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 no. I, I, prior to being hacked, I've never seen you advertised. You need to get with all these organizations. And if they're having the quadruple on, they're having an event here or. No, you need to, you need to be posting it and posting it and posting it because that's how you attract people in here. It's very dead on our Facebook. I, I don't need to see, get your twenty-five dollar, that's fine, to get your permit for your garden or your garage sale. You need promoting people who bring people into Grants, like the rodeo, the golf course, whatever it is. That's a tool. That's what makes money. Perfect. Perfect. Uh, what else do I got? Um, I have one more thing.
Mr. Padilla?
Mark, uh, what's the, uh, number three? Well, number three?
Well, number three, there are.
Yeah, cause when we had that deal here the other night, those guys told me something, well, three was shut down or?
Yes, sir. So the, uh, Office of the State Engineer dictates that once you're drilling and you get close to your water level, because we're so close to the current well, that theorized that you could pull, uh, cuttings or, or material from the aquifer into the well and then put that into the distribution.
That what happened?
No, sir. So we cut it off a good twenty feet before we actually hit the water. But when, uh, when the guys went to go check to see where they were at, they had pulled their equipment up because boulders were falling in. And so they lost about eighty foot, ninety foot hole. Yes, sir. So at that point, we knew we were safe to kick the well back up. And just to fill everyone else in, uh, we had twenty-five foot of twelve inch, uh, water line shatter on San Jose Drive. That's where all the water.
Okay, uh, that was my next deal. Saturday night, we heard like something like a bomb going off. It made a heck of a noise. Right there by the football field, an eight inch line blew up. Guys, let me tell you. The neighbor coming, Phil, what happened? And I looked over, the water was up to the bar. I don't know. I'm just guessing fifteen feet up in the air.
Did you go and get it?
Oh, you should, let me tell you. Ah, so I went. So I went to see water, uh, I wanted, Vanessa, tomorrow, I'll pick you up, we'll go check it out, I want you to see what goes on there. It happened in twenty seventeen, I don't know if you guys remember, but we had a big flood there, and this one went into people's yards. One guy was running over there, he has chickens, and then he, chickens, chickens, you know? And, uh, that was the least of the worries, because water was going into people's yards. We're gonna have to work, uh, work something out, so we can divert the water into the Rio San Jose there, on the west side. And then on the other side, we'll, we'll work something out there, but it was, it was awful, God, let me tell you. But when O M I got there, I called it in at quarter till late Saturday night, they got there quarter to nine. And see, the, the safety issues, guys, people were going through there, like, so I, I parked my, my vehicle close to the, the brake, so divert the traffic to the other side, because people were going through there to the house, when I said, don't go through there, water was deep. It's a safety issue, so I told O M I, I'm not an O M Ier, Jacobs, get some barrels, get some, something to put in the middle of the road to divert the traffic around, but it wasn't done, guys. At ten thirty at night, it was still going, three hours later. They couldn't find the shatter valve, and I was, I marked it for them. But they, I guess they can't read an offset. But anyway, you guys gonna have to look into something like that with Jacobs. Somebody could fall into that hole, and they won't draw them, but mess up the vehicle, you know? It was, it was, it was a major deal, I was gonna call you, but I said, well, it already happened. You know, but I was out there, you and I, huh?
Yes, sir.
At ten thirty that night. But anyway, uh, Mark, what's, uh, what's, uh, happening on that line that we're supposed to go across the interstate to the Zonic Canyon?
Yes, sir, so we've hired a, a company, actually, the owner's a, a local guy from Grants, so he's got some really high powered equipment, and they do this, uh, oh, I'm gonna mess up the turn, it's some sort of sonar, where they do ground penetrating radar, that's what it is. And so we're locating where the lines cross over underneath I forty, so all of that's still in design, and so, uh, that's the USDA project that Don's in charge of. There's five million dollar waters and a five million dollar wastewater, uh, USDA.
So it's on the works.
Yes, sir.
It's supposed to be done this summer, because people at the rodeo grounds, they don't have the water, see?
Yes, sir.
And then it came out of my telephone from, ooh, some gallon of rodeos, we have over a hundred horses, but you guys had already anticipated, you had the water truck over there, right?
Yes, sir.
So we covered that, and, uh, but anyway, okay, what's going on on the roader ground project, are they working on it, or?
That's a Don question. What was your question before that? The USDA, the five, the five million.
Oh, okay, 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 yeah, so construction's not till next summer? It's being designed now, so next summer's, uh, construction on the, on the USDA. On the USDA, on the water improvement, going across the freeway, that's next summer, construction, designed now. The rodeo grounds, we're starting, the committee is starting this week, you guys just approved the task order with Smith Engineering at the last meeting.
Right.
The committee is meeting on Wednesday or Thursday this week, and we're gonna start the master plan.
That was my question, so.
Yeah.
A lot of people heard about it, and they're calling, see, they, they like the idea, you know, everybody likes that idea, so.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna move a little, well, it's slow, but, anyway, we're, we're getting it done.
How's, how's the, um, water line gonna go across?
Okay, well, the, the USDA, uh, design is gonna include a new water line under the tracks and under the freeway, all the way up to almost that mountain bell, the old mountain bell building there. But from there, we're gonna have to utilize GO bond funds, because USDA will stop there, they, it won't go any further. But from there, we could utilize GO bond funds and, uh, increase the size of the water line up to the rodeo grounds, but that'll improve the water pressure in that whole area, the homes, the rodeo arena, all that. So we'll have to utilize more GO bond funds from, uh, where it stops to the arena.
It's gonna go through the property that we bought, right?
Uh, actually, there's a right of way road, there's two options that we have, but we have right of way, right?
Good, that's it.
That's it for you, I, I have nothing. So, um, Eric, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Um, all in favor of adjourning this meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Let's go on.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you.